Is this my call? Oh, there we go.
There it is.
Thank you. Okay, it's four o'clock. Welcome to the August 24th of the Salina City Commission meeting. Will the Clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Larson.
Here.
Commissioner Angel.
Here.
Commissioner Arpke.
Here.
Commissioner Jennings.
Here.
Commissioner Peck.
Here.
If you will, please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time is our citizens forum. This is where anyone from the public can come up and speak on anything not on today's agenda. If you will please come up to the podium and give us your name and address. We would like to hear from you. On anything.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Mayor. I would like to see it open to the public.
Sir, I know who you are, but if you could give us your name-
Colonel Stevens, 340 Maple, Salina. On this swimming pool, I understand we've got some good prospects, but I think it should have been open to the public for everybody to situation where it wasn't just to the schools because I think there was a lot of people that was surprised that it was named. I, that's my theory, and I've heard some comments on it from the public.
Are you referring to the naming of the pool, sir?
What?
Are you referring to the naming of the pool?
Just the way it went by. I think, I think everybody should have been involved in it rather than maybe just the schools, and I don't know who else. I didn't see anything in the papers or on the radio or anything else about it. Thank you.
Mayor, Commissioners, you know, the thing with the schools is just to get some feedback, and staff has a recommendation, but that's why we have a formal naming process. It goes through first the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee, so it's a good opportunity to publicly invite anyone who might have a thought regarding naming, whether they like that or whether they have another alternative, to forward that to them, and eventually that'll come to you, and then you'll take final action. So there'd be a couple of opportunities still for the public to be involved if they want to be involved.
So, so it's not definite?
No, the only definite thing is, is a group you get to choose what the name is.
Okay.
Yeah.
Did you, did you understand that, Mr. Stevens? Okay. Anyone else wish to comment on something not on today's agenda? If not, we'll proceed with wards and proclamations.
The month of March 2010 as U.S. Census Awareness Month in the city of Salina, Andy Martin, Salina Area United Way Executive Director, will read the proclamation.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners, wonderful citizens of Salina, Kansas. It's my pleasure to read a proclamation for the city Commissioners of Salina, Kansas. Whereas the 2010 Decennial Census plays an essential role in the social and economic success enjoyed by all Salina residents, and whereas the work of the 2010 Decennial Census requires advanced planning, training, implementation, and promotion in order to obtain a complete and accurate count of all residents of the city of Salina, and whereas the U.S. Census Awareness Month will be observed to recognize the importance of the 2010 Decennial Census and the contribution it plays in securing that the residents of Salina are accurately represented in all levels of government, and Salina residents receive their fair share of our nation's resources, and whereas the theme of the Salina U.S. Census Awareness Month is "Stand Up and Be Counted," which reflects the enthusiasm, yes, the enthusiasm, that, that the people of Salina and the U.S. Census Bureau have in striving for a complete and accurate count of Salina residents. Now therefore, we, the Commissioners of the city of Salina, Kansas hereby proclaim the month of March 2010 as U.S. Census Awareness Month, recognizing the value of a complete and accurate count in the Decennial Census. We call upon all Salina residents to support and promote the WeCount 2010 Steering Committee in planning for a complete and accurate population count for Salina. Thank you.
And even though we are just at August, this is for the month of March of 2010, because I know you have quite a timeline of things that are going to be happening.
Yes.
News media's going to be talking quite a bit about this, so Salina will be on board.
Right, and it takes many months just to make one or two things happen, and so we're trying to be as prepared as we can.
And one thing that you're looking for right now is volunteers?
Volunteers.
Okay.
So, anything you can do to help support us, we greatly appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you. I have a signed copy of your proclamation.
The month of September 2009 as National Food Safety Month in the city of Salina, Melissa Heinrich with the Salina-Saline County Health Department will read the proclamation.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Whereas National Food Safety Month was launched as a mean of emphasizing safe handling, processing, and preparation of foods, and whereas an estimated 76 million Americans experience foodborne illness each year resulting in approximately 5,200 deaths and 324,000 hospitalizations annually, and research shows that gaps in food safety increase the risk of foodborne illness, and whereas it is widely acknowledged that education and training in proper food safety procedures reduces the risk of foodborne illnesses, and whereas Food Safety Month is an important tool in educating the public and food service workers about this critical health issue, and whereas the 2009 Food Safety, Food Safety Campaign is focused on teaching the public and food service workers how to safely store food through an educational program called "Food Safety Thrives When You Focus on Five." Number one, purchasing food from a safe source; two, cooking food adequately; three, hot hold, or holding food at proper temperatures; four, clean and sanitizing all equipment; and five, good hand washing and personal cleanliness. Whereas, city of Salina government supports food safety measures to safeguard the dining public and acknowledges the efforts of the National Restaurant Association, local restaurants, and the Salina-Saline County Environmental Section's food safety program to promote food safety. Now therefore, the Board of City Commissioners hereby proclaim the month of September 2009 as National Food Safety Month in Salina, Kansas. The Board of Commissioners further expresses their appreciation for the many dedicated educators, consumers, and restaurant workers who actively promote safe food products and the safe handling of food.
Are there any activities or functions that you're planning in September for the National Safety, National Food Safety Month?
Yes, so far we have got 10 classes scheduled. Several of those will be at Central and South High, they combine their classes. I also do classes at Lakewood and South Middle School. We do programs each month at the Health Department in English and offer them in Spanish quarterly.
Open to the public?
Yes.
So they can just call you for more information?
Yes, they sure can.
Okay. Thank you very much. I have a signed proclamation for you.
Item 5.1, conduct public hearing regarding Sunset Plaza Community Improvement District as petition by Sunset Plaza Acquisition LLC.
Funny, I always look over here. Do I go ahead and open the public hearing now, or after you speak, Mike?
We can be fined opening now.
Okay. At this time, I'll open the public hearing. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. I wanted to call attention to a letter that was faxed to us today that you should have at your seat from Dillon's Food Stores, indicating their position on the project. As previously reported to you, the Senate Bill 119 passed and became effective July of 2009, so that facilitated the possibility of creation of community improvement districts. And Sunset Plaza Acquisition LLC has submitted a valid petition requesting formation of a community improvement district, the basics of which are proposing to levy a 1 percent sales tax on eligible sales and services to finance improvements on a pay-as-you-go basis for 22 years or until the approved improvements are financed, are funded, whichever occurs first. On the 3rd of August, you pass Resolution 096646, which set the notice of public hearing for today, which is what we're here to conduct. The proposed district is depicted in Exhibit B of the petition, and suffice it to say, it is the Sunset Plaza Development in the southeast corner of Crawford and Broadway, including the McDonald's location in the northwest corner of that quadrant. Then, as additional background, June 22nd of 2009, you passed a resolution adopting the Neighborhood Revitalization Plan. And the reason that I bring that up is, is the basis, or some of the basis for the revitalization plan, as well as the geographic area that was established in that plan, is that those areas were designed for, it was designed to target areas in need of incentives or investment due to their, their condition and need for redevelopment. And that was supported by some of the findings in the draft comprehensive plan, which is yet to be adopted, but they identified areas of change. They being our consultants that conducted the comp plan work. And so, the areas of change also identify areas within the community that additional support for redevelopment is appropriate. In fact, it calls out the Broadway corridor for redevelopment, and it also calls out the financial regulatory or administrative incentives that reduce the cost of infill and redevelopment may be appropriate to make it competitive with new development. So, to set a little bit of background in terms of our previous actions as it relates to the Broadway corridor, those items are in place. The neighborhood revitalization area itself would make this project eligible for tax rebates, and I'll touch on that a little bit further, a little bit later. Staff has had preliminary discussions with representatives of the owner and developer about the proposed project, the neighborhood revitalization area, the proposed approach going forward. And while none of the provisions of a development agreement have been finalized, I think it's accurate to say that they're receptive to revisions to a development agreement and the structure of the community improvement district, including waiving of the tax rebate that they might be eligible for as part of the neighborhood revitalization area program. Other things that we discussed were that the initial proposal includes funding of $15.3 million of improvements, with the developer securing private financing for that entire amount, and then seeking reimbursement for $12.2 million over the life of the community improvement district. The remaining difference of approximately $3.1 million represents expenses to be funded by the owner developer and not subject to reimbursement from the community improvement district. As I noted before, this format is a pay-as-you-go project, and as such, the proposed financing represents the least amount of financial risk to the city, since the owner or developer is fully at risk if the project doesn't succeed, whether that's due to lack of sales, because of concern about the, the additional sales tax, or for whatever reason. In the event that the project isn't successful, there's no obligation on the part of the city to repay that debt. It was incurred privately and would be a private responsibility. The applicant has also indicated that they would consider limiting the community improvement district financing to what we've termed hard costs, more of the capital improvement items, and removing some or all of the soft costs, more of the security and administration, those type of things. They've also indicated that they're receptive to architectural, city architectural and design review, which is similar to what we did with the COELS TIF, as well as reimbursement of city expenses and a 1 percent administrative fee. So, having said all that, the, the purpose of the public hearing today is the first step in terms of hearing out the public's feedback and indicating to staff whether this, this concept merits going forward. In the event that it would, we could finalize any of those terms or additional terms in terms of a development agreement. With respect to conformance with the strategic plan, we've identified the vision statement items that seem applicable to this project are that the city will be exciting, exciting to live in and thriving economically and socially, that it'll be clean, attractive, and inviting, that it'll be a place with a quality of life that appeals to residents but also visitors, that it will be attractive and well-maintained, and that Salina will encourage and be supportive of industrial development, economic expansion, market-driven, and tax-based growth, and homegrown entrepreneurialism. Additionally then, our goals in our strategic plan include creating a community of mixed-use, quality development, and redevelopment. I apologize, but I want to make sure I hit all these. That the city will maintain growth and development policies that are updated to reflect current conditions and desired growth direction, and as previously noted, the geographic area that this project is located in has been specifically identified both as an area of change and an area in need of redevelopment support through the neighborhood revitalization program. The action before you today is just conducting the public hearing, so in and of itself, it has no financial impact, but additionally then, due to the pay-as-you-go format, the project, if it were to go forward, would not have financial impact on the city in terms of expenses, since they have indicated they're willing to waive the neighborhood revitalization area tax rebates. In terms of recommended action, I provided a summary of the steps in the process, and the first step is adoption of the resolution, which we've done, publication of the notice of the public hearing, which we've done, notification of all the property owners within the proposed CID via certified mail, and conducting the public hearing. We're at item number four at this point. If we were to go forward, we would adopt a resolution or ordinance authorizing the CID approving the cost estimate, levying the CID sales tax, and approving the amount of any special assessments, and the approved method of financing. So for today, we've identified three possible actions on your part. One would be to close the public hearing and provide no further guidance at this time. In that event, staff would continue to negotiate with the applicant to finalize the format and structure of a proposed community improvement district, as well as the terms of a development agreement, and provide the necessary ordinances, development agreement, and related documents for your consideration at a future date. The second option would be to close the public hearing and provide guidance by way of a majority vote of the commission regarding any specific provisions regarding the format and structure of the community improvement district or the contents of the development agreement. If that were to take place, then staff would proceed accordingly in terms of preparing the necessary documents, as well as negotiating the development agreement. The third option is to close the public hearing and formally conclude by way of a majority vote that creation of the Sunset Plaza Community Improvement District is not advisable, and if that were the case, the request would be considered denied, and no additional negotiations or development of an agreement would be necessary. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
At this time, I think I'd rather open it to public comment, and I'd rather have public come and comment on this issue. Please step up to the podium and give us your name and address.
I'm Connie Johnson. My address is 738 Victoria Heights Terrace. I am a partner and part-owner of Elmore Center Plaza on East Crawford. Elmore Center is a 100% locally-owned center. It's well-managed and well-maintained. Each month, we set aside a certain amount of money for maintenance improvements. The money is saved for this purpose before we ever put any money in our own pockets. There have been times when a major improvement has been necessary, and we've gone to a local bank for a loan. We can do this because we have good credit. This is just good business practice. Our tenants and our community expect this of us, and we're proud of our center. The property in question is owned by out-of-town owners. It has been poorly managed, it is an eyesore, and has been that way for many years. Why now are these owners asking the taxpayers to pay for the upgrading and cleaning up of their property? Why have they not consistently kept it up and managed it well as a good business practice would dictate? Why now it is a responsibility of the taxpayers to pay for this cost? If the city approves the benefit district in question, will there be some oversight for the city? And you sort of answered that. Can the owners be held responsible? Have the owners pretended a detailed plan showing what improvements will be made and the cost for each portion? Will there be oversight by the city? And you did partially answer that. Will the city have a way to require the property owners to main the property that has been improved? What, will there be in the future to be sure that those improvements are continually maintained? If after the improvements are made, surely the city, the center will be a lot more desirable, and the owners perhaps will be able to sell their property at a profit. Will this profit go into their pockets, or will the profit be paid off to pay the loan off? Is there a requirement? Would there be a requirement be made that the profits would use to be paid off the remaining years of the loan? 22 years is a long time. Will the property owners be required to spend their money first and then apply for the remaining dollars? Or does, do they reply, apply for the whole thing at front? I think you answered that. How much of the loan will be spent on the bricks and mortar of the improvements of the center, and how much on servicing the loan? And partially, you did answer that. If there's not enough income from the sales tax to satisfy this loan, and the payments are not made, then what happens? If they lose a major tenant, and a major tenant is just a lease away from losing it? If they lose a major tenant and they don't have the, the income from the sales tax, then what happens to the property? Are they responsible for it? And if they are, are they prepared? Do they have the funds to, to pick this up and continue to pay those 1 percent amount, what would be the 1 percent amount to service, to service their loan? If improvements are not done soon, yes, this will continue to deteriorate. I'm in agreement with the city that something needs to be done. But it doesn't have to deteriorate. Look at Walmart, Dillon South Gate, a portion of Craft Manor, just to mention several. Areas of town have recently upgraded their properties, and they have not asked any of us, taxpayers, for one dime to help them maintain their property. In fairness to all of Salina, I am asking that the city commission give very serious thought to this. If the owners care about Salina and want to improve their property, they can use good business practices, just as the rest of us have. They can use these good business practices to manage, to finance, and to maintain their property. And I'm thinking perhaps, if it was only their money and they were on the hook for the whole thing, maybe they would take better care of their property in the future.
Mike McRobert with Max's Properties for Sunset Acquisition LLP. Address is 104 Armour Road, North Kansas City, Missouri, 64116. In response to the, I guess somewhat to the previous speaker, we view the CID process as, as an opportunity in advance for the city of Salina and other cities that have used these in other states and locales, as an opportunity to arrest blight before it gets to a position where you look at a complete redevelopment. I guess, after listening to the last speaker, I hear some of those concerns, and I think there may be some confusion in how this process works from a standpoint that the owner of this property, this isn't city money, this isn't like a TIF project where the city's on the hook for bonds, this, that, or whatever. This owner will go out and, and borrow this money to make these improvements to the center. Given the economic climate today and the financing climate today, particularly with regard to retail activities, this ownership group will have to have personal liability on this debt. To the extent it's not successful, the ownership will have, will have issues and will, will have to face that debt, not, not the city. In that regard, ownership's pledge and belief to come into this area of the city where, as the previous speaker indicated, there is decay and need, and to which our discussions with the city council have indicated decay and need, ownership is putting their money where their mouth is. They are moving forward with an agent center and trying to create an excitement and an activity level in that area to increase retail sales. Most assuredly along the way, if, if we're successful, we plan on being successful from a standpoint, if this is granted, or we wouldn't do it, the, the property, the value of the property will increase, will be subject to additional property taxes, et cetera, which we're not interested in, in the rebates there along the way, as, as we've already conceded. We've had good discussions with city staff up to this point, have looked at reducing some of the size and scope of the project. One of the things that, trying to keep, I didn't take good notes as, as she was speaking, and she stated her case well, but looking towards the future, one of the things that the state of Kansas in creating this statute and allowing this 22-year process, one of the things that we had tried to build into this over those 22 years, was the ability to keep and maintain the property in such a way that, that the increased viability continues and, and thrives. I think today, as far as the size and scope as originally discussed, we're down to a number somewhere around 7 million. They've, they've pulled $5 million out of the, we have pulled $5 million out of the process. The only soft costs that are in place at this time are for legal, architectural, and engineering. I think our discussions with city staff have been very positive, and, and we look continued, look forward to continue working through this process. We're not a, a big city developer, this, that, or whatever. I appreciate the fact that we're not from Salina. We have done one of these other, we've only done one other community improvement district in our history. That was in Liberty, Missouri, at a shopping center very similar to Sunset Plaza. It was originally called, we've changed the name, it's now called Liberty Crossing, and it's a property where there had been a grocery store. And the grocery store vacated, left. Crowley Furniture, I don't know to what extent people get to city, get to city or hear some of the Kansas City ads, but Greg Crowley and his daughter advertise a lot. They've been a part of that process, and have enjoyed the renovations and enhancements we've made to that center and the activity that it's drawn to the center. We feel this is a very viable tool and, and something that would benefit both Salina and Sunset Plaza Shopping Center. And do I feel questions at this point, or?
I just need to clarify something here. You say that the grocery moved out and a furniture store moved in?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and that's one of our intents. Our, we're, I guess to, to address, we're disappointed that Dillon's chose not to support this, and, and understand probably some of the political ramifications of that, but our research indicates that Kroger Dillon's parent is involved in TIFs and large amounts of public incentive deals across the country. Our intent, quite honestly, is Dillon's lease is up in 2014, and, and our intent is to create an environment, and they have not, I would not want anything to be misrepresented. They haven't indicated, any indication to leave this, that, or whatever, but it is an older store for them and an odd configuration, and our goal is to create an environment where they can't afford to leave because we'd have a ready place for, for another grocery in there. We, we need to create a position for this to be economically viable for the owner in any way, shape, or form, we have got to create an environment that's positive, that attracts shoppers, and generates retail sales, which is ultimately positive for Salina also.
At this time, I think we were just going to take public comment.
Okay.
I'm sure we'll have questions later. Thank you. Additional public comment?
My name is Joseph Coachman. I live at 1506 Louise Lane here in Salina. While I don't live in the Sunset area, I am a shopper at the Sunset Plaza, and I commend the need to have this part of town, the whole Crawford and Broadway corridors, brought up to a higher level of standard. I think it's a very dangerous precedent for the city to start okaying different sales tax depending on which McDonald's you go to. But my primary concern is the human impact. If you draw a circle around Sunset Plaza between a half and three-quarters of a mile, it will encircle some of the most poverty-stricken and lower-income people in our community. I have been told by an employee of the Sunset Dillon's, and I will admit, I was not able to check it out with the manager, that the Sunset Dillon's more than, has the highest rate of usage of all the Dillon properties in Salina of food assistance programs. For those of us that count our dollars, our money in dollars, 1 percent is not much. For that portion of our citizens that count their money in pennies, 1 percent is a whole lot. And that means a 1 cent, 1 percent reduction in their WIC money, a 1 percent reduction in their food stamps, and it means that that sales tax is in actuality going to be paid by the state of Kansas from tax dollars that the rest of us has already paid. While I don't understand the financial impacts for either the developer or the city, I do understand the poverty impacts on a particular part of our citizenry that cannot afford a 1 percent reduction- a 1% reduction in milk for their babies. And many of them live within the radius of the Sunset Plaza and use that facility for any number of things. And I would just ask that the city give serious thought, not only to the economics and to the physical, but to the human cost to the people of Salina. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Catherine Purney. I live at 129A South Santa Fe. And as a consumer, why would I choose to shop where I'm going to have to spend more money? I do shop Dillon South Gate for convenience, but I also shop at Dillon's on Iron Street, and I also go to South Gate. So I can choose to not go to Sunset Plaza, which is exactly what I would do, and I would choose to not go to the McDonald's. And all of those goods and services that are available at Sunset Plaza, you can get at other places in Salina. So as a consumer who watches my dollars, I definitely would not choose to go to Sunset Plaza if I had to pay 8.2% sales tax. My other concern is if you allow a special sales tax district for Sunset Plaza, then pretty soon Central Mall applies, Midstate Mall applies, Galaxy Center applies, and we have these little pockets of 8.2% all over Salina, and it becomes a real issue about, okay, I can get that for so much here, or I have to go over there to get it for something else. So I don't think that is what you want. I really feel it'd be a can of worms that you would be opening. As a property owner in Salina, and we do own commercial property, when we maintain and upgrade our properties, we are responsible for finding our own financing. And I think that as a property owner, that is your responsibility.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Steve Stockham. I live at 1635 East Cloud. I have a little different take. I am a property, or not a property owner, I am a renter at Sunset Plaza. I own Sunset Berriards. We've been open just at seven years now. My viewpoint is I think this will be a good thing for the city. I really do, because I think it's going to kind of straighten some of that area out. It's starting to deteriorate, and it does need to be picked up. However, it gets picked up, it's no concern to mine, rather than, I just want to see it be done right. I think this way it has a governing board of the city watching over it while it's being improved. It won't be, you know, half-done, half-baked. So, just a real quick, as I think it would be a good thing for the city. And if it does expand to other areas, I don't see that being bad either. The city has some areas that need some development. If you look at Wichita, some of their areas that slowly went down have just nosedived into the dirt, and we don't want to do that here, so, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Mike Zurbek, 150 South 9th. My biggest concern is you have McDonald's, payday loans, an HR block, a Radio Shack, a Dillon's, several other businesses there that are making profits, actually pretty good profits. And if they're going to borrow the money themselves, and they're not in a big hurry to get it paid back, you know, 22 years, why don't they just increase the rents to the property owners that are going to be there, that are making profit? Push that burden on them for having such a good plaza. You know, just like anywhere else, if you go to a new construction area out south, they're going to pay top dollar for that space. So if you're fixing up Sunset Plaza, they should pay the extra cost, not the taxpayer. The city of Salina has luckily not increased the tax this year. County has, sounds like the airport authority is. So every time something goes up, the taxpayer is responsible. Milk goes up, food products go up, because gas went up, taxpayers have to pay. It's time that the person that's making a profit should have to pay for their property being maintained. That's it.
Thank you, sir.
I live at 2041 Ridgeview Road in Salina. I would like to echo some of the other business owners' comments here, that the type of improvements that are being talked about here are the responsibility of the owner of the property. We own a fair amount of commercial property here in town. In fact, years back, we were one of the owners of the Sunset Plaza Shopping Center. We maintained that property ourselves. We always set aside reserves for the capital improvements that needed to be done, and that is the correct way to do it. I think if you open up this type of development to where a single entity is the recipient of the tax advantage that they get from levying the extra sales tax, then you have opened it up to where realistically, any one owner of any one business in town can come to you and say, "I want to charge a different sales tax." And that's just wrong. That's a hidden tax. You know there's not going to be anything in the advertising that is done saying, "Our price is such and such, but we have to charge you 1% extra sales tax." There's going to be a hidden tax on the people of Salina, and it's wrong. These type of developments have some merit if they are a community development, where a downtown development district has all of the people get together and put together an improvement district for a whole area. This isn't a whole area, this is one entity that is going to benefit from it. We own the property right next door. Nobody has come to us and said, "We think you should be part of this improvement district." Not that we would want to be, but they aren't looking at this as a community improvement, they are looking at it as their individual piece of property.
Thank you, sir.
Good afternoon. My name is Charles Renner. I'm an attorney with the Hush Blackwell Sanders Law firm. I've been working with the applicant on this project and with city staff. I happen to be an economic development and local government attorney, and I've done a number of special purpose districts. That's what I tend to call them because they take several forms, transportation development districts, CIDs, SPDs, special benefit districts. I wanted to just take a few moments and accomplish a couple of things. One, to expand a little bit on the application, and two, to make sure there's enough time for anyone else who wants to comment to you as well. What I would like to start with is, just generally, in front of you, you have a visual of what the project is. I think in this particular instance, saying what it is is a lot easier for those folks that have driven by or been at the center. You can see the east building as it is now, as it was before there was a fire, and notice that it's something more than general maintenance or a typical capital improvement. This is a significant upgrade to the facility, and that's really what we're talking about. We're generally here with what I think is an opportunity for two reasons. One, an act of nature, there was a fire, and it destroyed a building, and as a result, it was significantly improved, and we have a vision of that. And two, enacted a legislature. Legislature created an opportunity here. And the opportunity is to use a local incentive tool to address a number of the concerns that folks have raised. Number of concerns that the council, the commission, has already identified in that area with that center in a way that is less egregious or less aggressive to some of the other incentives you have. And so I'm going to start a little bit with what it is not. It is not a tax abatement. It is not a tax rebate, which is part of the program that the city has looked at, and what those do, and it's not a tax increment financing plan. And all of those projects require a couple of things. One, the city identifies an area for investment, reinvestment, public incentive, which is the case here. So it is a priority area. When you're talking about what standards you would apply, this would tend to fit in that regard. But what those programs do is they redirect the tax base of your city, of your county, of your school district. And this would not do that. I think that's important because there were some very valid concerns about city and municipal services for those folks that tend to use them the most. Practically speaking, to the extent that this does not abate property taxes, that this generates an improvement that takes place before anybody other than the property owner spends a penny and increases property values, it's actually going to put more funds available to the city, county, school district than you'd see otherwise. And that's why, in part, we're foregoing any request or any eligibility for the tax rebate program that this area fits in. And the other thing it does is, it does address a problem and priority, and if it works, and by the way, it only works if, one, there's an incentive in place that the property owner then uses to make a significant improvement, and it's easy for me to say that'll happen here with the picture below you because you've already seen part of the building out there, and it creates an area where the same folks want to continue to shop, and where more people shop. So to the extent that you have a radius that was talked about, about how this center now draws people from the area, that the statistics generally show that the larger, the nicer, the more the upgrade in the center, the more the draw will occur. So more folks would show up. If you make an improvement on something that is a city priority, and this is, you've made that indication already, and you do it in a way that attracts more people to the area, you're not diverting the tax base of the city that's used for those folks that need it, and you're actually expanding the draw, and again, limiting the impact on everyone. With that being said, there is an issue here, and that is that this center is an example of what really goes on across the country. In fact, while we do have tenants that have indicated support and spoke in favor of this, and we've got some that have not, obviously, as you've heard, the fact of matter is that even Kroger/Dillon's, when they participate in existing redevelopment in cities, participate in programs that include tax increment financing, sales tax rebates, tax abatements, it's actually rather prevalent even with some of the tenant mix that we have. The reason is that generally speaking, if you want to see an upgrade of a certain level, and you want to stabilize and enhance an area in need that is within your city's core, there are certain challenges. And the challenges are, how do you stimulate and incent redevelopment? That's what you've been addressing with your neighborhood revitalization program. That's what Dillon's, Kroger has been doing nationwide. That's frankly, thankfully, to a fire, that's what started to happen on this center. To continue it, there will need to be some type of program involved. I think the Community Improvement District Act, some form of an entity that I've worked on numerous occasions, is the best way to do it in this instance, in part, because not only does it accomplish the goals and get the, something more than maintenance, and by the way, we have agreed to make sure, structure the budgeting, so this is clearly focused on the capital improvement type upgrades that you're seeing below. While this does create an incentive to accomplish what you see, it does not affect your existing tax base, does not divert property tax or city-county sales tax away, and it has no impact on city finance in the sense that it's pay-as-you-go. The property owner will incur all of the expenses, will finance every single thing that you see. They would be eligible for a portion to be reimbursed through the Community Improvement District, and that would only work if what they do is make that center better. It has to continue to be a place where people who are shopping there shop, and it has to also become a place that more people shop at. And so if anything, because we've heard questions about city oversight, which I think are very valid, if anything, this type of program, because the first thing you'll get is the investment from the property owner to do this, this type of program is almost insurance that they're going to undertake activities to make it more appealing for people to shop there, whether it's tenants or additional investment, any which way, because otherwise, they are completely exposed with the entire amount. So just structurally, from a finance standpoint, from a lot of the questions that you've heard raised standpoint, from what even our national tenants on the site are doing, and particularly from your establishment of this being a priority for revitalization, rehabilitation, redevelopment, and public investment, I tend to think that this is a particular program that will succeed. It'll succeed because it will create a significant upgrade in what you see now, something more than the common maintenance that you've heard referenced. It will keep all of the financial risk away from the city. It will be a total investment by the property owner. So it'll accomplish the improvement goals. It'll accomplish the goals in your neighborhood revitalization plan. What it won't do is it won't divert your property tax base. It won't divert your sales tax rebate, something that I've referenced, we see the other, our tenants even participate in. And truly, it won't do anything other than completely incent the property owner to continue to make this a place where people want to shop. And I will say, not to intimate, that everything is replicated across the country, but I have worked on a large number of these, and I went back and reviewed the, around seven, I think, that I worked on in western Missouri, that are shopping centers of a similar age. They have an anchor tenant, sometimes a grocery store, sometimes a pharmacy and a former theater, something, but something to this extent. And generally speaking, all of those districts have had growth in sales. Their growth in sales have been above whatever the regional average is. I'm not going to say that it's only because of the CID. I do know that the investments were made in part because that Community Improvement District was there, and that the tenants have stayed, and that new tenants have come in, and that investments have been made, and that the results are, if you just rely on sales figures, that for the most part, people have continued to shop in those areas. In this case, I think we would expect to see the same thing. If we don't, risk is totally on the property owner, but what you would be doing is buying an insurance policy at a minimum, that the developer is, the property owner is going to make this investment and do everything they can to make it a place where people want to continue to shop. So with that, thank you.
Any other public comments? And I should have timed it, but as our agenda is pretty heavy today, I should have said, please limit your comments to two to three minutes.
Dennis Lawver from the Salina Chamber of Commerce. I want to thank you, and I thank everybody for coming, and certainly respect and appreciate the comments and the point of view of everybody that has spoken on this issue. I've had a number of folks over the last several years point to Manhattan as an example of a community that has the kind of retail development that people would like to see in Salina. And I don't know the timeframe, if they're referring to just maybe the last five or six years, or if they're referring generally over maybe the last 20 years in terms of what's happened in Manhattan. But that's been held up in front of me multiple times as an example of a community that they've got the kind of retail development we'd like to have in Salina. I spent four hours today at a meeting in Topeka City next to the city finance director from Manhattan, and we got into a discussion, and I brought up the issues that you've heard today. And I asked him about, and I expressed to him our concern. I said, "We would not be in favor of anything that would stunt retail growth activity. We would be opposed to anything that we believe would impact commercial activity, jobs, and payroll associated with retail developments." He indicated that in Manhattan, and they have been, they are the biggest per capita user of transportation development districts in the state of Kansas, and Mike could go into more detail, but it's a lot like a community improvement district. They passed one, two, they're getting ready, or three, they're getting ready to move ahead with a fourth and fifth. And his statement was simple. "We wouldn't have done the second one if the first one had stunted retail activity and stunted retail sales and jobs and payroll." He indicated that there have been folks that have moved just a block or two, intentionally moving into their TDD, and have seen sales increase 25 to 50%. And the proof's in the pudding that they wouldn't do it a second time, a third time, sooner a fourth and sooner a fifth time, if there was truly a long-term correlation between the increased sales tax and the money running through the cash register. We want money and jobs. "We want money and jobs and payroll to be created because of Sunset Plaza." The second question I had for Bernie was, I said, "Help me on, what's the logic in Manhattan to the concern that you're using this vehicle to incentivize private sector for-profit development?" And his answer surprised me because it was pretty simple, and I'm going to paraphrase. He said, "Yeah, because we want to incentivize private sector for-profit development in Manhattan." And I asked him a little bit more to explain what he meant, and he emailed me this chart, which I'm going to give to the deputy clerk to hand out. And it's within the context of tax increment financing, but the couple of key points is that you really create a partnership that works to the benefit of the city, the community as a whole, and the private sector. And as I circled here, the city of Manhattan continues to prosper and to grow. And it's all predicated on extensive planning, and Mike's comments at the beginning pointed out, all this is coming back within the context of the comprehensive plan, within the context of neighborhood revitalization as a good plan. I think you can create a good public-private partnership approach that moves the status quo forward in a direction we'd all like to see. Thank you.
Any more public comments?
Earl Stevens, 340 Maple. I've lived in Salina for 40 years, and I think we are back to the situation like Central Mall. It was sold several times. We are still having problems out there with the parking lot because people did not put money back for improvements. And I have to go along with some of the comments. I think we do that on our housing. I think we do it on everything, and I think business should be there. If I had $7 million to turn away, I don't know whether I'd go in that kind of business or not, because the economy is very different. And also, we've got to remember, Manhattan is a college town. We are trying to get to be a college town, but we have not got there yet. And I think you've got a different clientele altogether in these areas, Florence, Manhattan, Kansas City, and different places. Out here in the open, we know our people, we know where to go. The only problem you're going to have on this is a good street, Crawford Street. And coming off of I-70 and I-35 down through there, if you are going to buy Centennial, if you forgot something, you're going to stop in there and pay your 1 percent. The people around here that have been shopping here will understand, just like they said, a little money is saving. What's going up? Not anything that I'm doing. Everything's going up that I'm buying, but not what I'm doing. So I think we better, from the standpoint of people that go from the north side, they're going to have to use more money to pay for gas and different things to go farther around to get to where they're going. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Okay, at this time, I'll go ahead and bring it back to the commission for questions. The reason I did this a little bit backwards is I personally have had a lot of phone calls on this matter in the last two weeks, but I didn't know how many of these people had contacted the other commissioners. So I felt it fair that since some of the people were here, I wanted them to come up and give their public comment so that we could all hear everything and digest everything at the same time. Now, I'm sure some of the commissioners have questions, and without further ado, who wants to start?
Can we, I guess, start with the representative from Maxus? That's where I think most of my questions are.
And we really want to move this along as quickly as possible, so let's try not to repeat ourselves.
How many similar properties does Maxus own?
Shopping centers?
Right. Including Sunset?
Three, including Sunset.
Okay. So of the three, you've used CID in one, and you've applied in this one?
Correct.
On the third, can you give me a ballpark of, say, in the last five years, what Maxus LLC has spent in hard capital improvements?
No, because, once again, the Sunset Plaza is owned by a separate entity. Maxus is a management entity, and I'm here on behalf of that ownership. So Maxus would have spent nothing, would be the easy answer, but there have been funds spent on those centers.
Do you know what's been spent at Sunset in the last five years?
The east side required, roundly, around $200,000 of ownership funds to get to that level over and above what the insurance proceeds were.
But that's because of the fire, right? There wouldn't have been spent otherwise?
Well, no, it could have been put back differently.
Okay.
The insurance wouldn't pay for the facade upgrades, et cetera.
So is that all that's been spent, then, on Sunset in the last five years, you think?
No, there have been, there are new roofs on top of Sunset.
And why did you consider, if you did consider and reject the idea of raising rents for the tenants to help pay for the improvement?
It's a chicken-and-egg type of situation with regard to raising rents. First, you have to have an economic environment where you can raise rents. I mean, today, the south part of Salina has been mentioned, South Ninth Street, that's where the action is, so to speak.
So would the plan be to do the improvements and then raise rents on the tenants, since you'd have a nicer?
Yes, I mean, those are all market forces, you know, supply and demand, and as far as what we can generate.
But I understand that leases can't be increased, I mean, rents cannot be increased until leases are up. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Do you want me to keep going?
Sorry. Some of your questions may be the rest of your questions.
How long has Maxus managed the property?
Ninety-six. Yeah, 1996. I believe it was, the property was acquired out of the Resolution Trust Corporation, is my recollection. I joined Maxus in '04, so if my facts are...
And did you say it's, instead of a $15 million project, it's now a $7 million project?
We're down to seven with some of the changes to half costs and ongoing things that have been negotiated out with staff.
Why are we still talking about a 1 percent instead of a half percent sales tax?
It's the same cost. It's the same reimbursement.
Pardon me?
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead.
The project is the same cost. It's the same project.
Right.
In discussions with staff, it seemed that there was a priority that was desired by the city to have emphasis on hard capital improvements. So ultimately, the total reimbursable number goes down. The project is still the same.
So we're talking sales tax reimburse at $7 million, just because we're doing the hard...
Correct. You'd still leave the same rate in place, which means that, in all likelihood, it terminates quicker.
Were all tenants sent some kind of certified mail or notice?
Yes.
Okay. That's all I have for him.
Well, since Mr. McRoberts is...
Yeah, no ask, but not, I've been following Robert.
McRoberts is up at the stand. If any other commissioners have question of him, just so we don't have to play musical
I don't know what your contingency plan is, but, you know, 22 years is a long time. And let's say the state then at some point says we're going to have no tax on food sales. What does that do to your plan?
We're in trouble. But I reemphasize, "we," or ownership, is in trouble. I mean, from a standpoint, our goal will be with the improvements to the center, et cetera, is to create an environment where we can arguably change some of the tenant mix, fly, change some of the tenant mix to where we generate, obviously, we have an incentive to create and find tenants for the center that are sales tax generating tenants, which ultimately is a positive for the city as well, city and county.
Okay. Well, it's like, kind of, what your plan would be if something like that would happen?
Well, we've got four years to create an environment. The Dillons, it was the first time they could leave. We've got four years to create an environment where they won't think about it, even where we hope that doesn't happen, but to the extent we have noticed and know that's coming, we'll be out looking, probably arguably immediately, for another grocer. I mean, hopefully, we've created an environment where somebody else will want to be in there.
So in this project, the $7 million that you're referring to would be the two areas of the capital improvements and common area improvements?
Correct.
But none of the security landscape, maintenance, advertising, professional services?
I think landscaping's in there, advertising is out of there. We will do, still do some of the security items. That was, I think that got misconstrued with some of the, as we're going through the process.
Thank you.
While Mr. McRoberts up there, I would, I've made my hesitations about the project known to each of them, but I would like to say I appreciate your thoughtful approach to this project. You guys have done a good job about bringing this to us, and hasn't these haven't changed, but I really do appreciate your approach and thoughtfulness.
I think that's all the questions that they wanted of you. Is Mr. Wynn still here? If not, I have a question that maybe you could answer. Regarding the neighborhood revitalization program, my only question is, if Sunset is included in that, who's in charge? Is it Maxus that does that, or is it each, is it the tenants that would participate in that program?
Mayor, the neighborhood revitalization program is a program in which they could get property taxes rebated back. So it's, in essence, it's an ownership situation. The owner, who would be the person who would pay the taxes, would be the beneficiary of that program.
Which is, in this particular instance, Maxus?
Sunset acquisition.
Oh, Sunset acquisition.
Yes.
That was my question regarding that. Mrs. Johnson stated that, and I don't remember if I caught that even in the blue sheet when you were, when you were reading that, Mike. In the event that it sells, and we have seen things like that happen, and it sells for a profit, does that money then go with Maxus, or is some of that money going to go back to pay back what is owed on that loan, or what is the mechanism on that?
Yeah, Mayor, you'd probably never see your staff recommend anything to you that actually takes a profit away from a business in that way. So if there's a sale, if they're able to make a profit on that, the ownership would realize the benefit of the profit. We would never get into that with any private business. What would happen, though, and as we talk about the development agreement, one of the things we can talk about is a transfer of responsibilities. Let's just say that happened in between when some of the improvements were completed and some of the improvements were not completed. The thing that we would build into a development agreement is, A, to make sure that we get to have review authority over all the aspects. And I will add, the information that was provided today also does include, if you're information, interiors and structural improvements, so it's not just on the outside. It's inside as well, which will add additional value to the properties. But in that situation, we'll have a default provision, but in essence, what would happen is, is all improvements that would be made, that we would determine to be eligible for reimbursement, would be reimbursed. Let's say at some point, then, there weren't any more improvements made, and there would be a timeframe in there, at some point, we would exercise potentially a default provision, and then, in essence, it would cease at that point in time. So we'll definitely, an agreement would definitely deal with the default situation because you have to presume that that could happen.
Mayor, if I may, Mayor Commissioners, if, to the extent it hopefully is helpful, and as you probably know, this is new legislation in Kansas, effective as of July 1st. So some of these questions are academic from our experience or lack of experience yet in Kansas. I know Mr. Renner has had experience in Missouri, and I, am I correct in assuming that the sale scenario is simply a factor in the valuation of the property and would basically, as a general rule, remain in place in the event of a transfer of ownership?
Yes, that's correct. I mean, and just generally speaking, most everything you're talking about is front-end on a 24-month schedule. So the real issue is not physical, you know, performance of the physical improvements, but relates to the ongoing oversight, and that you're exactly right. That would be, a component of the sale would be where the status of the Community Improvement District is. The city would never be in a position to be approving reimbursement for something that wasn't done by the owner. I mean, if, as an example, if a piece was done after a sale, it would be the new owner. You would have to, you would have to see something done before you were even asked to participate in a CID funding.
Mr. Renner, if you're comfortable answering this, I would presume that whoever the lender is, is going to have some kind of mortgage or security interest in the property and demand to be paid.
Typically, what you'll generally see is, is the standard private financing assurances and some type of pledge or collateral pledge or assignment to a lender. It would not be in any relationship with the city. In other words, if something goes sideways between anybody, all you would care about is the relationship you're having per your development agreement. There'd be no way anything else could affect you, and so, that's right.
Commissioners, too, I would like to say that, let's say that they did sell the property, they made a profit. That's actually a very, very good thing because that would show strength in the value of the property and the potential value of being able to lease that for, whether it be the existing tenants or future tenants. So regardless of ownership, the idea of this or in any of the programs that we have for core neighborhoods is to take away the core neighborhood impact, that aging impact in which your demand decreases and your potential leases decrease in value and your level of tenants decrease. The idea is to reinforce and build them up so that you have the potential for stabilization and/or an increase in value. So in essence, that would be a good thing to happen.
Any other questions of the commissioners to anyone?
Mr. Lawver.
Or to Mr. Lawver?
Mr. Lawver, can I ask you something, please? When you were having your discussion with the gentleman from Manhattan, did you get into any specifics? Does Manhattan have certain guidelines in place that addresses when the CID is improved, or do they just, is it case-by-case basis?
They have used a TDD and no. Bernie and I did not get into that detail. I would, I think a point that Aaron Peck made at the previous meeting about the need to have a CID policy is very appropriate and makes sense. So you're really looking at it in the bigger picture, and this just happens to be a project, but ultimately, a CID policy, and I would say that Jason and Mike and I, I were, kind of, I've given them some draft language about what would kind of be a policy for your consideration as it relates to a CID, and I think that makes sense. I'd assume they have a TDD policy in Manhattan, but I did not ask him.
Okay, thanks.
Not to belabor the point, but what we do have in place currently is that geographic area that was identified and a redevelopment expectation, which I think the point's been made, comparing this project redevelopment-wise to just routine maintenance. So in terms of what's been done with comp planning, it's not gone into any greater detail but has identified the need for financial incentives in these areas.
Thank you.
I do have one more question. I guess if the investment is such a good thing long-term, we're talking 22 years, it seems to me you'd want to make that investment anyway, and with the possibility of selling the property or increasing your lease cost per square foot. So your profit is probably going to go up if you invest in the property, even without the CID. So I guess you're looking at the difference between financing yourself and taking that risk for profit, or financing it through a tax incentive and having the people that use that particular shopping center to pay for those improvements. That's the difference that I'm seeing here.
Well, the only thing that I, and I'll make a comment, Charles, straighten that out if I'm sorry.
Just so that they can hear you back at home.
The only, Commissioner, the only thing I would differentiate is, is you, your statement sort of implied that there is public financing or public security toward this financing going on. And that is not, this is absolutely private, private funds that are going in upfront. And if we're successful, we'll be able to look towards those funds, sales tax reimbursements towards offsetting some of those, some of those costs. I mean, and that's where I would not want it to be confused with a TIFT-type mechanism... I mean, and that's where I would not want it to be confused with a TIF-type mechanism where the city has used its bonding capacity or this, that, whatever, and the city's on the hook. I mean, Kansas City, Missouri, I don't want to get too far astray here, but is writing checks for the Power and Light District because it's not paying the bills. And that is, that is not what's happening here. And if we're not successful, ownership will be facing, facing that debt service and those issues.
Thank you.
If I could just, kind of just a little bit to follow up, because I think it's, it's actually, one, a very valid point and two, you start to touch on what is going on with this shopping center and other shopping. There's actually a term for it. They're called grayfield malls or grayfield shopping centers. And what that generally means is that just public incentive aside or extraordinarily rare risk assumptions by property owners, what's going to, what would actually happen is the rents, you wouldn't make that investment and actually have rents go up in any way that are tied to that level of investment. The standards for, there was a study done in Phoenix, okay, because they've got several different shopping centers just like this and they reference a bunch of different shopping malls. And it's, to relative to other developments, smaller site size, lack of direct freeway access, several, in this case, up to millions of square feet of competing retail space within five miles that happens to be on the perimeter of a city and age. It's an older shopping center. And when you get right down to it, this is a grayfield shopping center. There's public investment or public incentive or the use of a CID aside, what you really would see is nothing to the level of the capital improvement investment that was referenced before. And that's why, I mean, I think, in my view, that's why I think that it's part of your neighborhood revitalization plan, why you've already started along the line of investing public dollars. In this level, you're doing something that does not divert your existing tax revenue stream, but the whole business component, I think is very relevant. What you're likely to see is who pays higher rents? Larger national retailers and then they drive, you've referenced Walmart, Best Buy, Circuit City, formerly Circuit City. And where do those places, where are they going? They're doing new development. They're not doing redevelopment and they're going across next to the highway. They're not going within your core. Frankly, what your staff, I think, was saying was that this may be something that speaks to arrest the natural de-progression of what happens with a grayfield center. I think you're, I mean, I think one of the opportunities is that you've got a property owner that, due to fire, decided to make an investment on an upgrade and thought that, well, in the right circumstance, this may be a risk worth taking. But I don't think it's the, frankly, I just don't think it's the type of thing where you would make this investment and you double rent rates and you would actually see tenants. I think you would see double vacancy.
Thank you. Okay, this time I will close the public hearing. I think we've kind of heard both sides. And before I bring it back to the commission for action, I had a hard time wrapping my head around this because, and I'll just say this in a nutshell, and I welcomed everybody that came and I'm very appreciative of everybody that did come and speak up today. I did not invite that pesky fly that was aggravating everybody that spoke at the podium, but I had a lot of people that have complained since we've been in office here, the Vice Mary and I, for the last two years about, you know, raising this and raising that and the golf course fees went up and now we've got this pool that we're building and the water rates went up. And a lot of that went into place when the economy wasn't at the situation that it is right now. So when I heard about the CID thing, I thought, you know, I had to give credit to our legislators for thinking outside the box and wanting to create some kind of a stimulus within a community. Instead of waiting for the government to bail you out, we're basically bailing each other out is what we're doing. We're helping each other to create a better community or a better environment. That being said, right now I have too many friends and too many acquaintances that have had their hours cut or are unemployed, don't know where they're going to come up with the next, with the dollar for their car payment or their house payment. While I am in favor of the CID and I think it's a great idea, I can't support it right now. While there are certain things we can still control at this time, things that we have to control, which is our services that we offer the citizens, that we have control on, something like this, I just have a hard time wrapping my head around it right now when the economy is the way it is, which I know everybody gets tired of hearing that and using that as an excuse and I don't mean to use it as an excuse. I just feel this is not the right time for Salina to be doing this to its citizens. With that little remark being said, I don't know if any other Commissioners wish to give their opinion. Again, this was just my opinion. Had many, many phone calls, many emails, couldn't get out of the church parking lot yesterday for so many people that had their opinion on this. I value that. And short of having a call-in show, which I wonder how many people at home, there's people that tell me they get home and catch the very tail end of our city commission meeting and would we ever consider having a call-in show so whatever's happening at the time they get home, they could still call in and that, I told them that, that might be a possibility. Let me think about that. But I do appreciate the citizens that did stop me and call me and showed up here today because it just shows that there is a community involvement and there is love for this community. A lot of people think that they're not being heard and that they're just one in a million and I'll just let Joe call because he calls all the time or I'll just let Ernie call because he calls all the time. You can't just let the next guy do it because that may not happen. You've got to speak up for yourself. So I do appreciate people that have taken the time to become involved. I don't know if any of the Commissioners wanted to respond before we bring this back for action. Jason, you look like you had something to say?
Yeah, I can wait if you want to go ahead and go around first. It's up to you.
Unless the Commissioners are ready to take some kind of action on this?
Okay. Mayor, what I wanted to do is kind of summarize a few things. Part of the, part of the problem we're seeing here with the shopping centers, the same thing we see in every community across the nation, and they hit on it, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on it, but you have neighborhoods that are declining. I mean, that's, that's it and we can look past that or we can say, well, I wish somebody else would do something, but in fact, we do have neighborhoods that are declining. We have a lot of tools at our disposal. We have things like tax increment financing and sales tax reimbursement, neighborhood revitalization area. We have all these tools. Most of these tools, well, really all of these pure true incentive tools would involve taking the taxpayers' money at large, means everybody's collectively in moving it over in some form or fashion into the private sector. This is probably the only one in which doesn't do that. In this particular tool, the difference is, is that the person who's shopping, it's not really hidden, they know what it is, there's a lot of exposure, it's going to be on a receipt. So if you shop there once and you see an extra sales tax, you're going to know before you go the next time. It's a market-driven tool where someone gets to actually make a decision. It's not hidden in higher leases that turn out to be higher prices that quite honestly, I think if we lined up 100 people, most people wouldn't know the difference in prices from, you know, one location to another. It's a possibility even among a lot of our retail stores, even the same grocery stores, you could see differences in prices for the same product in stores in different parts of town. It's not an uncommon thing. A lot of people really don't realize that, they kind of go to the place that they like to shop and, you know, or they like the convenience of the selection. So it would be easy to presume possibly that, well, if nothing happens here, that it'll just happen on its own, but the fact is in the last 20 years, 30 years, or however long that shopping center's been there, it's not. And it's not happened in many places in our community. We have seen places where you may see a facade renovation, where you may see some inside renovation. We, to my knowledge, I can't recall one development where we've seen internal renovation, facade renovation, parking lot and landscaping, all as a major project to go beyond maintenance but into a true upgrade. And that's what we're talking about, modernizing an old shopping center to look like a modern shopping center at today's standards. That's part of the difference in what they're trying to do here versus just some other smaller projects around the community. And when we kind of looked at this, we said, how can it be made accountable? And that's where the development agreement comes into play, to say, you know, if you're going to recommend spending X dollars for internal renovations, for roofing, for whatever it might be, that that does have to go back in front of the city and if it's not eligible, it doesn't get reimbursed and the developers' dollars are up front first, ours are last. It would be a reimbursement basis based on an, based on an accountable review by us. If there's a request for a change, it would have to come in front of you, even if it would be typically allowable by state statutes. So there's really some good mechanisms in place to safeguard our role as being a conduit for use of those resources. Kind of checking my notes here. Some of the other things, when you look at this, you know, originally you did have some soft costs in this, but the soft costs are being pushed aside and really the focus is on the hard costs. I guess our perspective is, and we don't know the developers or the owners from, except for a meeting or two where we've had like we would with anyone else, but we're kind of looking at this and said, in the Economic Development Strategic Plan, the real purpose of that is to say, let's get more aggressive than we've been in the past as a community. We have not addressed these developments at all as a community. We simply haven't. So whatever we've been able to get, we've been fortunate that somebody has spent just a few dollars here and a few dollars there. It's purely by chance from our perspective. We haven't done anything. So when we look at this tool, it is an opportunity to say, let's do something a little bit more aggressive than maybe we have in the past. 1% is a lot to someone who doesn't have a lot of resources. I tell you what, 1% would be a pretty small increase in the lease though. So if they're talking about, if we're talking about why wouldn't you just increase your lease, you're going to see more than a 1% probably do a project like that because you're probably going to see the turnaround time on paying back a loan be a lot quicker in that particular situation and you're probably going to see higher prices as a result. So there are lots of ways to do the same thing, but the taxpayer in the case of this structure is exactly the same people as the shoppers are. They're the same one. So it doesn't matter if you raise the price of the goods or if you raise the tax, the only difference goes back to that accountability of knowing exactly what your tax is and being able to know exactly what it went for. That's really the only difference because you could do it the other way, but odds are it's going to cost even more. Some people may not even realize that it went up and maybe, maybe paying more out of their pocket. So I guess our thought is, is that, our recommendation was to go ahead and, you know, have the public hearing and postpone it to give you more time to percolate on it and if you feel that it's at least potentially a tool that you might want to use, what we would do is go back and try to create a development agreement that would satisfy your needs and cover all those areas that may be of concern and try to get those, you know, tied up for you so that you could feel pretty comfortable as the first use of this tool. If you don't choose to use this tool, this tool can only really be used two ways. One is with an increase in sales tax, which becomes even more difficult in a mixed-use situation that we've talked about like South Broadway. And there's been conversations with people. You have people that don't generate sales tax as well as those that do. If you don't generate sales tax, it gets into be a different issue. You're talking about special assessments that, and special assessments truly come out of your pocket and so it's not as equitable necessarily as a retailer with a new revenue stream versus a business that has to pay special assessments and doesn't have any revenue stream. So it gets more complicated when you get into the mixed-use than it is with this type of situation. We kind of felt if you're going to try to do an experiment, this is probably as clean a situation as you could get. For one reason, fiscally with the city, it doesn't cost us really anything, just administration of it. There is no risk to the taxpayers whatsoever, that there's no risk that we would ever have to come back and pay for anything. That's a good thing fiscally. We know with the other incentives, that's not always the case. The TIF district is a good move, I think, on our part, but there is risk in that that we don't have here. So there's some benefits that way, too. So I guess our hope would be that if, that you would give it a little bit more time, think about it a little bit more and then we could work on some more detail. We recognize though that if you truly don't believe in the concept of this tool, that's okay and that's a decision you get to make tonight, but our thought is if you think you might need a little more time, you have the ability to use that time and we could see what we could come up with in the meantime and maybe take care of some of your issues.
Well, it looks like tonight we're just talking about, are we going to keep discussing it with MAXIS and Sunset? And I think we should continue discussions. I have a couple of questions and a couple of issues. The first is, I don't think that the tax should be used for professional services either. I think it should be used only for the capital improvements, common area improvements and landscaping. The second kind of concern I have, I guess, is I feel like we're flying blind right now. We don't have any policy or guidelines in place, so we're just kind of doing it on a case-by-case basis, you know. Six months from now, we have the policy and guidelines in place and we find out, oh, well, Sunset wouldn't have qualified if we had had this in place six months ago when they first applied. I realize the location and everything we're talking about, probably they would, but that kind of makes me uncomfortable. And I guess third, Mr. Bankster, Mr. Gage, I don't know who knows this, but the city kind of, I guess, will oversee the sales tax receipts and then when the 7 million is collected through sales tax, does this automatically sunset? Does it come back before us or how does this 1% go away, I guess?
Yeah, what will happen is, is the, the sales tax would be levy, the additional sales tax would be levy there at the shopping center. It would go to the state. The state would then provide those funds independently to us. They would go into an account, somewhat like we do with the TIF district as well, go into an account and then we would hold on to those funds until we get a request for reimbursement of eligible costs. So at that point, we would make sure that those costs are eligible, that, you know, everything is, is it should be in an order and then we would make a reimbursement at that point in time. And, you know, talking about a plan, you're correct because this, this legislation did just come right out of the chute. As we go along then, we've talked about the development agreement is something that's kind of been part of the evolution of our discussions. It wasn't something we started with, but it didn't take long for us to think about the need for that accountability for those who pay into it as well as just, you know, the public at large and for the city. And so with this type of scenario, I mean, we, we had asked the, the property owner to make sure and contact the tenants. They had already started doing that, which was really good, so we were both on the same road there. So that was good. That's something you would see in a, in a policy is that contact the tenants, give them that right to be heard, make sure they know this is going on. You would see development agreement. You would see reviews for the architectural, for the parking lot, for the landscaping and all that. You would see us being on the front end of the accountability and the review. And you'd probably see, at least a proportionate share of, if soft costs are allowed, we'd probably want to cap it to a, to a certain percentage of the overall project. In this case though, I think we're headed to a direction in which you won't see any soft costs at all. So that would probably well be within whatever a policy guideline would be there. So I think in the end, what we'll see here is, would in essence help us create our policy, kind of learn as we go, but I think that the, the policy issues are becoming very, very clear.
And it would automatically sunset.
Do we know, sorry, do we know if Sunset Property theoretically pays for all these improvements out of their corporation and they do take advantage of the sales tax rebate? How much money does the city lose because they decide to take advantage of the sales tax or the property tax rebate?
Well, we don't know for sure and a question came up earlier. I had our finance director try to run rough numbers. What we don't know, what's kind of a magical thing is, once the improvements are made, what will the property be appraised at?
Right.
No one knows for sure and you don't know until that happens and it's not always what you put into it. So some, some rough numbers with our finance director running down the hall to speak with the county appraiser, we guesstimated that the increase in taxes per year would be somewhere around that $43,000, $44,000 per year. And it's really kind of a shot in the dark and a guesstimate, but, so we don't really know for sure what that would be.
Well, I have to say that, I may be a little bit softer on this, you know, as when we started. I had a lot of concerns, a lot of them have been voiced. It's a, it's a very complex tool and a real simple toolbox and that's, that is definitely scary right out of the gate. As somebody that does seek to rent in locations that have a very high rent rate, there is value in the property, in the draw of the property and there's just no doubt about that. There's, one of the, one of the issues that I, I still have that maybe gets muddier after one of your comments, Jason, was I had a notion in my head that it would be nice to take an area. This is a, a one quarter of one intersection, granted a big quarter, and McDonald's jumped out on their own and said, hey, we're going to get more sales if we do this, you know, and the neighbors across the street, two of the other corners have really beautified themselves. The payday loan and the Walgreens are both great examples. So to me, it, there doesn't seem to be a whole lot of doubt that there, there's going to be an impact if Sunset does something. And so then, you know, if, if me as a business owner stands a chance to raise taxes to improve my own property, I would jump on it. So I just definitely don't blame Sunset for doing that. The, the question is, is it well thought out enough? And that's, that's where I would back off from recommending number three, that we just walk away from it and say that we need to keep it open and we need to look at, at some of these things that are, that are possible snags. Yes, I would like a hard policy that kind of gives a checkoff list that we go through and I know we'll develop that. I don't understand and I would like to hear if there is, I don't understand that there's a great time sensitivity other than the fact that the legislature granted us with a new tool and we're looking at that tool. But is there a time sensitivity on the part of Sunset LLC in which they want this But is there a time sensitivity on the part of Sunset LLC in which they want this reviewed and a decision made, or is taking more time appropriate with them?
Just to respond to that in particular, there's a couple of things. One, every discussion we've had with staff and this discussion today has been, with, with tenants, everything's been valuable. So the more that there is time to discuss those things, the more responsive and more consensus can develop, so there's value to that. Primarily, just to kind of walk through the timeline, this is the ideal. The ideal is that the, the primary thing we're talking about is the physical improvement to the shopping center and the parking and the landscaping. In an ideal situation, that would all be in a position to proceed the minute spring breaks. That's going to involve additional consensus with tenants, just timing design, getting approvals for design, and doing that facade first, and then focusing on trying to get the parking initiated and completed before the end of the calendar year. My understanding is that there's a significant timing issue with, is it concrete or black tub?
Asphalt.
Asphalt. The plant's shut down in, like, October. So there's always the potential that this will bleed over to a second year of a project. That's kind of what we're up against. So there's enough time, I would think, to, you know, stay at it. Frankly, we've had meaningful discussions. Every point that I've heard has been valid, they've, just nothing has been very dragged, long dragged out or prolonged. I think we could work within that. The focus would be to try to make sure there's enough time to, to continue communicate with all the tenants and get input and still start in the spring.
Well, I guess I'd prefer not to kill it, so to speak, right now. I do look at what I call our old mall compared to our new mall, and our old mall is now our new mall. And they probably have two tenants out front that they would have not secured if they hadn't have said, we got to do some facial work, we got to fix these huge potholes, we got to do something with this. And our old mall now looks like a new mall. You would hope the new mall learns from that and fixes the parking lot, and they've got a lot of area out front that has no tenants, and then maybe we'll, we'll see that increase. And I think that's what you spoke of, too, Jason, that, you know, we need to create that sort of movement somehow. And even though we refer to out south, out south wasn't necessarily even a, a prime retail corridor as measured on other community scales. So I appreciate the time there for that input, but I'm not inclined to proceed today, but I'm not inclined to just kill it today.
Real quickly, I might, I might make a note that Commissioner James talks about the development with the Midstate Plaza, and I agree, that's, that's a great example of facade improvements and general improvements to the property, although there can be parking lot improvements yet to be made there. And I think that's a perfect example of a private developer paying for those improvements out of their back pocket.
Mm-hmm.
I, I don't believe that if this goes through, I don't believe people's shopping patterns are ultimately going to change. I don't believe there's going to be any loss of tax revenue. This is a great incentive for the city, and it's a great incentive for the property owner, and it's a really lousy incentive for the shoppers. And, and ultimately, I just can't quite get past that. I would love more than anything to see improvements made to this property. I personally shop there and live within a couple miles of the property. But there's, we can, we can postpone this, we can, we can further discuss development agreements, but ultimately, the question of how we place this burden on the shoppers of that, that store or district, ultimately, how do you progress past that? And maybe if a couple other commissioners, I, I mean, Mr. Lawver, or not to confuse the citizens, Dennis, he, he hit it just right, I think, when the, the particular person in Manhattan said, yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna make them pay for it. I mean, that's, that's the only answer there is, and I just can't quite, can't quite get past that.
Is there a possibility, Jason, this might be fielded by you or maybe Dennis, is there a possibility? He spoke to the difficulties of multi-use properties. We've also talked about the whole Broadway corridor. Is there a, a possibility of a reasonable amount that something more encompassing in the entire area could be done or, or would even be considered?
I think there's a possibility, and we have spoken with quite a few folks who have businesses along at least the south section of the Broadway corridor. One of the issues there is you get into the public area of Broadway, questions about medians and driveway accesses and things like that, landscaping along there, right-of-way improvements. So you get into some different types of improvements than what we have here on the one development side. So that's where you start to vary. And again, the other thing is, is you have a different source of revenues, excuse me, from those who participate, and then you have to weigh the balance of equity. Again, if you have, if you have a non-sales tax-producing property and you have to come up with a special assessment, which is a new cost without a revenue stream, to do something, then you're going to say, boy, if I'm going to do that, it better be big benefit for me. But what if your facade doesn't get improved or something? So you get into some of those that make it a little bit more difficult. We do think, though, that we, we want to keep educating with this tool with those bigger areas because we think there's a potential use if we can try to mesh that, you know, benefit with the, with the revenue sources and all that. So we want to keep working on that. But if you take this and expand it a little bit more, you're probably going to get into some of those issues, and you might have difficulty with some consensus. Percentage-wise, legally, it takes, you know what, I think 51%, depending on how you structure this, to bring a larger area into it. So it's, you could force properties into it, but I'm not sure you'd probably want to do that. That would be an issue where we look at a policy in the future, we'd really want to look at, is a simple majority enough, or would you want super majorities to create those?
With that, with that, I'll bring it back to the commission for action. And just to remind commissioners, we were given approximately three steps.
Would you like me to summarize those again?
Uh, yes. The blue sheet says no additional formal action is needed at this time, so that's why I'm questioning what, what you need us to do.
Yeah. If that's the case, commissioners, you could simply just direct staff to continue working with the, the property owner and ask us to bring that back at a time in the future. I don't know that you have to designate that today. And all that's saying is, is that you're still open to considering the concept. Certainly doesn't mean that you fully support it, and you don't have, you don't have to go there. We wouldn't expect you to, and I think everyone would recognize that you could, you know, approve it or you could deny it at that point in time.
So I, I understand that we can either proceed with guidance, proceed with no guidance, or, or just let it die. Those are the three.
Correct.
One, two, or three.
And the, the comments that have been made can be accounted for or incorporated by staff, but there, if there's anything in particular that you want to make sure or instruct that be included in the development agreement, that would be the formal guidance portion.
In the motion.
Yes.
In the motion.
Correct. Staff would try to take into account what we've heard, but if, if you want something in particular, then you as a group collectively can give that direction.
Mr. Gage, were you going to say something?
I'm just kind of thinking.
We are in open session, so.
Okay. What I would like to do is, I would like to have more economic impact data. I'd like to look at the area that's one mile to two miles out. I do shop at that store, that is my store. I do eat at the restaurants there. That is going to impact my pocketbook directly, 1%. You know, I spend probably $100 a week at Dylan's. That's 40, 100 bucks a year or so, so that's a dollar a week more to personally fund the improvements there. It's not an inordinate amount per week, but I could go out to eat for 50 bucks a year somewhere else.
Commissioner, what type of data would you want us to look for?
I'd like to look at, if we could, house value, median income, approximately how many household members there are, so I can get their shopping budget, how much food money they're going to spend there, if that's possible.
So you're talking about trying to model the shopping patterns of the neighborhood and try to put numbers on the quantity of, of potential shoppers and what they spend there?
Yes.
I don't know if we can come up with that for you.
It might be hard, but.
I can tell you, I spoke with the manager of the Dylan's store, and if they, if they take their Dylan's Plus Card data, and, and take a look at that, which is a little bit misleading because some families have multiple Plus Cards. Some Plus Card users don't frequent the place very often, but the amount, the actual economic impact is relatively negligible, less than $10 a shopper per year, I believe, is the, is the data that came back. Now, certainly that will be greater for those core shoppers who support that store, but anyway, for what it's worth.
And I understand that of the three major McDonald's, prime McDonald's stores in Salina, I understand that the one on Crawford and Broadway is possibly the, the one that receives the most business.
Yeah. I don't know. One thing I do know is that your individual stores are probably going to be reluctant to share private business data with us. So what we'll need to do is see if there's any possibility we can look at the shopping center in aggregate. That may be the best way to try to come up with that, because if you're a private business, you're probably not going to want to share your sales. You might to an extent, but.
No, but you might share increase or decrease, not the exact numbers, but you wouldn't, I mean, that's pretty vague. Yeah, my sales are up, yeah, my sales are down by 10%, by 15%.
Well, that's another question. Are we looking at patterns over the last few years? That's, I want to make sure I know exactly what you're looking for because I want to make sure I bring back whatever that information would be.
Well, if I could ask commissioners here, I mean, to me philosophically, you either support this or, or you don't. I know there's, and maybe it's, maybe I'm making it too black and white, perhaps there's gray area, and that's kind of what I'd like to hear from. So I guess, I'm, I'm thinking regardless of the economic impact to the median household, just fundamentally, I have a, I have an issue here. So what kind of gray area is there for you guys?
Well, Commissioner, I kind of agree with you now, and people might quote us on that. But now, now, now I kind of turn in thinking of, of this recent conversation. My, my thought was, if you're able to take this tool and you're able to do a whole area, New Market Square in Wichita draws people because it's an area. The Dylan's Corner across the street, or go down to Kellogg, maybe doesn't. And my, my concern is, is putting the pin on the map on that area and then saying no to the auto repair shop and yes to the shoe shop, or whatever all the individual businesses are. And I, I completely understand what, what you're saying about mixed-use properties. There's not a real whole lot of areas that we're not going to get into mixed-use situations, and even, even drinking establishments won't apply. Their tax collection is alcohol tax, so we can't use that, and we can't use liquor stores, although those are a very small portion of the tenancy there. So it does be, it does become a philosophical question of, do you, do you see it as, as the tool for it? The gray was trying to postpone it to answer those questions. How do you pushpin the map of Salina to where you've got a lot of plus one-half or plus 1% sales tax areas? And then what if we have that once-in-a-lifetime opportunity comes along to better the community and needs that 1%, but then it's going to feel like a 2%? So I, I agree with your statement, but unfortunately, that, that would pull me away from, from consideration of this.
And I don't, if, if commissioners need more time to think about this, I mean, I'm all, I personally do not, but if others, somebody make a motion, let's think about it.
Seems like we're having a little bit of a hard time coming up with direction for staff, and we might hear when we say where are we at on this, when the, when the owners and everybody says, how's this coming along? If I was in your position, Mr. Gage, I would say, I really haven't heard a whole lot to go back on. I, so.
What we could do, commissioners, is, I think Commissioner Peck is correct, though. We need to, we need to have a clear decision. Staff is not recommending approval of this today for the reasons that we stated. We need to work on details if that's where we need to go. So the two options are, one is an action that would deny it and we're finished with it. The other, I would think it'd be good to have a motion rather than just let it set that says, we move to, you know, to continue to consider this and ask that staff, work with the owner, bring back development agreement and whatever else you need to see. What I can say is, is if there, if there's certain things that you as individual commissioners may be thinking about that you might need, but you're not really sure yet, you can forward those to us. We can, we can incorporate as we go along, so I don't know that you need to have all those at the tip of your tongue to see, and we can, we can refine those with you as we go along. That's not a problem from our perspective.
So we could have a motion just to think about this some more with some direction to staff as to what we need to think about? Well, Vice Mayor Peck said his decision was made, and earlier I got on my soapbox and said, I can't support this at this time. So if we had a subitem where we could just have a motion to see if we wanted to continue this discussion?
Well, we can do that by way, here, I'll tell you what, I'm going to make a motion right now, and I think that'll just weed it all out.
Okay, good.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna move that we close the public hearing and formally conclude by way of a majority vote of the City Commission that creation of the Sunset Plaza Community Improvement District is not advisable. And so, in, in essence, I'm moving that this request is denied and no additional negotiations or development agreements would be necessary.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded that we close a public hearing and formally conclude by the way of a majority vote of the City Commission that creation of the Sunset Plaza Community Improvement District is not advisable. All those in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same sign.
Aye.
So motion passes, three aye, two nay. The nay was Angel and Arpkey. To the consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of August 17, 2009. Item 6.2, authorize purchase of traffic signal battery backup system from Gady Sales Company Incorporated in the amount of $31,500. Item 6.3, resolution number 09-6654, executing an agreement with Union Pacific Railroad Company to construct an at-grade pedestrian crossing for a hike bike trail along Schilling Road between Ninth Street and Ohio Street, project number 06-1579.
Is there an item that a commissioner wishes to pull from the consent agenda?
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved, it's been moved and seconded that we approve the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
Motion passes 5-0.
Development business.
Item 7.1, rescind first reading ordinance number 07-10411, rezoning the proposed Magnolia Hills addition number two subdivision.
Mr. Andrew.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, we have a process whereby if the planning commission makes a recommendation on a zoning change and you have a preliminary plat, that zoning change is brought to the City Commission so that you can give an indication to the developer that you support that change, and that allows them to move forward with final plating and developing infrastructure plans. That was done in this case in August of 2007, and the developer had 12 months to complete that process, and then requested an extension to keep their preliminary plat and zoning that process, and then requested an extension to keep their preliminary plat and zoning in place. But have recently indicated that due to a slowdown in demand for lots, they at this time would just like to withdraw that item. And so we have a ordinance out there that was approved on first reading, and to eliminate this, we need to have a motion from you to rescind that August 27, 2007 approval on first reading. What that means is, when the developers do plan to develop this property, they'll start over with the Planning Commission at square one.
Questions of Mr. Andrew. Thank you. I'll open it up to public comment. Seeing that there isn't, I'll bring it back to the Commission for Action.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we rescind the August 27, 2007 approval of ordinance number 07-1041 on first reading.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to rescind approval of ordinance number 07-10411, rezoning the proposed Magnolia Hills Estate Edition Number Two subdivision. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes five zero. Administration.
Item 8.1, resolution number 09-6655, appointing members to various boards and commissions.
That pretty much speaks for itself. I was going to read all these names to give people credit for volunteering their time for the Arts and Humanities Commission, Business Improvement District, also known as ALIED District, the Board of Advisors, and the Design Review Board, Community Art and Design, Convention and Tourism, Discipline Area Advisory Board, Housing Authority, Human Relations Commission, Parks and Rec, Planning Commission, Solid Waste Management, Tree Advisory Board, Board of Zoning Appeals, and the Community Corrections Board. Due to lack of time, I won't be able to read all their names out loud, but I do know that they're on our website. So I'd like to thank those people for this, and we'll bring this back to the Commission for Action.
Mayor, I move we adopt resolution number 09-6655.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt resolution number 09-665, appointing members of these said commission boards. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion passes five zero.
Item 8.2, resolution number 09-6653, authorizing and providing for the construction of improvements for the Bicentennial Center.
Mr. Franz.
Thank you. We have been discussing improvements to the Bicentennial Center for some time. 2009, 2013 Capital Improvements Program provides for a total of $2.5 million worth of improvements, split into two pieces, one for 2009 and '10, and then one for 2010, '11. It is now time to proceed with the first phase of that improvement, which is another item on the agenda. Before we do that, however, we have to authorize the method of payment, which is always a good thing. This resolution provides a legal authority to issue bonds for the project, up to $2.5 million. They will be general obligation bonds, although we have indicated that we will allocate the one-set increment of the tourism tax to that purpose. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Questions of Mr. Franz.
I guess I just have a statement for Mr. Franz, Mr. Gage. I think four to six weeks ago, we first discussed approving the architectural contract. We approved that, but I requested some kind of business plan, or some kind of plan to put into place a reduction of the taxpayer subsidy, the operations for the Bicentennial Center. I haven't seen anything, we haven't had any discussions about how that's going to happen, and until I have those assurances, or until we have that discussion, I'm frankly not willing to pull the trigger or vote to approve the expenditures for the improvements.
Okay. Commissioner, the next item does address the plan. Quite honestly, there's no way to get a plan like that in that timeframe, so what that would do is really push off the improvements till next year. The reason for that is because the timeframe that Marshall talked about on the next item is to try to get into an open timeframe in between events, so we don't have to basically close down the use of the facility, you know, for the timeframe the construction's occurring. So I understand what you're saying, and we're working on that, but we really need to do a comprehensive analysis of the food sales. It's not something we can just put together in a couple, three weeks. So if that's the perspective of the Commission, that would push this project off clearly into next year sometime.
So basically, this is just approving the funds even though?
This is authorizing the financing for the improvements, yes.
May I ask a question here? We've got the increment currently, and I know things can go up, things can go down, currently generates $200,000 a year, and the service is going to be 225. So that's about a $375,000 shortfall. I just want to make sure that I'm reading those numbers right.
The increment as it's defined now will not be sufficient to pay the full amount of the debt service if we issued the full $2.5 million ultimately.
Right, and the next item just basically breaks down the difference, so there would be the outside chance that the debt service would actually not outdo the income that we're going to see on the increment. Is that correct? That's over the $2.5 million, and right now we're projecting that we would have a shortfall on servicing the debt.
Yeah, we expect at this point, the 1% marginal difference would be $200,000 per year with growth through the next nine years. You know, if the historical average comes into play, we're talking about 5% to 7% growth each year. Obviously, we're not seeing that this year, but we hope that that will come back at some point. We're not banking on that, and so when we first brought the project to you, it was actually before the sales tax portion was really put in, or the transient guest tax portion was put in place. So when we looked at that, we knew that the increment from the transient guest tax would not fully meet the debt service, and anticipated some of that would be the public-at-large tax dollars involved. But if we get good growth, hopefully it'll take up, it'll cover a little more than we even anticipated, so, you know, maybe we'll get a little bit more margin if things really start to move forth.
Thank you.
Any other questions of Mr. Franz? Thank you. I'll open it up for public comment. Seeing that there is none, I'll bring it back to the Commission for Action.
Mayor, I make a motion that we adopt resolution 09-6653, authorizing improvements at the Bicentennial Center up to an amount of $2,500,000.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt resolution number 09-6653, authorizing improvements to the Bicentennial Center up to the amount of $2.5 million. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
The motion passes four to one with Angel voting nay.
Item 8.3, award contract for the Bicentennial Center renovations, Phase One, project number 09-2771, Chini Construction Incorporated, in the amount of $941,590.
Mr. Perry.
Good afternoon. This has been a long day for you all, I know it has, but we've got entertainment for you. We have slides, we have information, we've got everything you may want to ask about this entire project. We have our longtime employee, Mr. Meyer, who's been with the Bicentennial Center, ready to bring that up for you, to try and finish this out on a light note for the rest of the day. The Bicentennial Center has been there for 30 years, and this is the first opportunity that we've really had to do major improvements on the facility. The facility, as I've listed to you all in Commission Improvement Reports in the past, if you will go ahead and bring it up, last year we did 451 events. The facility has got just a small window of time that we can try and get this project done. We've got five weeks that we can try and make this thing work. What we have in the project, and this is beginning first off in Heritage Hall, you all have all seen Heritage Hall, so you've seen how kind of just very sterile-looking it is. The room will look, it'll have a distinctive floor pattern to it. Those large squares that you see on the far wall are acoustical tiles to help absorb sound in there, so it'll have a very nice resonating sound. There will be a different color scheme done to it than what we've had in the past. It should be a very nice, attractive, upscale look to the facility to be able to accommodate all the numerous types of conventions, events, et cetera, that we have at the Bicentennial Center. There will be, the walls will be accented with architectural finishes, with molding, things of that nature. The bifold walls that are in there, you do not see them in this slide, nor do you see it in this next one, because, you know, we have the availability of making that room break down into four sections, or two large sections, or however we need it to be configured. They will be repainted, and it'll be just a complete, fresh, new look on the area there. Moving on in, into the meeting rooms upstairs, if you've been, you all have met there in the meeting rooms in the past, this is a totally new look that we will have in there, fresh color scheme to it. We've approached this project with the entire intent, with the representative from Jones Gillum Rens, to try to be sure that this will be durable, classic-looking, it'll be something that will maintain for a long period of time, it will also kind of give a wow factor to the facility. Now, if you notice in the wainscoting that is around on the sides of the walls there, you have a darker wood, and you have a lighter wood, that is some of the architectural trim that will be in there, as well as this cloud pattern that you see that is up here in the ceilings, where you've got a dropped ceiling in there that'll help to absorb sound, but it'll also give a much more attractive look to it. It'll be just all over a very nice, effective look. Carpeting samples have been selected to where if we get a large spill, as you all saw when you were there a few months ago, we can take a section out, we can clean it, we can then put it back, or we can replace it, so that way it will not get as worn-looking as the facility has over the past. Moving on, this is another meeting room, just a different type of setup. What you saw in the previous setup was like a conference-type setup. This is theater-style. Against the far wall, you have large cabinets that will open up, that will house things like the ride-on pads, or a whiteboard, things of that nature, so you don't have easels standing around. It's an attempt to try to make the place continue to have an upscale, very classic look to it, to help bring in more conventions and more meetings. Going into the restrooms that we'll have upstairs, we've gone with very durable tiling, very durable countertops. Smiley, can you turn the lights down on that end of the room for me, please, so they can see that a little bit better? The room will have a very nice, classic, elegant look to it. Upstairs, if you remember, the upstairs bathrooms were not ADA compliant. These will now be ADA compliant. They will have the proper stalls. We're actually adding more stalls to try to accommodate the amount of meetings that we have up there. In all the meeting rooms, this is the ceiling clouds is what we are referring to. Those will not only be upstairs in the meeting rooms, but they'll be downstairs in Heritage Hall as well. I'm going to move back to the meeting room for just a moment. The meeting rooms, as I said, they will all be ADA compliant with upgraded door handles, entrances, and egresses. The walls and finishes will all be made to try to ensure that, like I said, it will maintain a nice look for a long period of time. The immediate concern is to have Phase One, to have it completed within a specific window of time. We are here before you today to ask you to go ahead and approve the contract to Chini Construction. Chini Construction was the low bidder on this project. We've got a great many subs on this that were, as fun review with the architectural firm of Jones Gillum Rens and the staff, we were very pleased with the subs that they chose because the majority of them are all very local, to where if we have a problem in the future, we'll be able to call someone up locally, and they can handle it for us. We're not dealing with somebody from way out of town. That's what I have for you at this time. Do you have any questions?
I'll start, even though we don't want to be here all night, I realize. You had a somewhat a schedule for Phase One, August 25 through October 23.
Yes, ma'am.
What are you predicting it's going to take then to finish Phase Two and Three?
Well, the numbers that we've got in so far are just for Phase One. You're talking about a window of time, or you're talking about...
Yeah, by the time we get to Phase Three, how much time is all of this going to...
Well, Phase One is, as you said, is meant to go through October 23. What we're looking at on Phase Two, and Mr. Gillum and I are working on this at this time to try to have substantial completion, possibly even by the end of this year on Phase Two, we're working on that, trying to see what the availability is of product and the availability of timing, because we've got so many events that are taking up the space. One of the issues that we're doing is we're moving the people that are currently in the meeting rooms down into Heritage Hall, moving people from Heritage Hall over to the arena. It's kind of a dance all around the building, wherever we can put them to be sure that their events are not inconvenienced, and we're still in business all the way through the renovations.
Okay, my other concern was that there is over $350,000 difference from the architectural estimate to the winning bid.
Yes, ma'am.
Boy, that's a big number. So in the event that they have change orders, are we going to be right back up to the $1,101.1? I mean, we can't predict that, so it makes me kind of curious why there was such a big gap from the estimate, the architectural estimate, to that winning bid.
Well, we, Mr. Gillum and I walked all through all the estimates with all the contractors with what their bids were, the top two, excuse me, and we discussed that with them. One of the issues that we had discussed with them is being sure that they understand we will give them the timeframes to work in there at night. We were initially possibly pulling our numbers looking only days. They're looking at trying to bring people in, trying to get them working around the clock as necessary. I've discussed that with our operations staff to try to get it taken care of in this five-week and four-day window of time that we've got.
Okay.
Yeah, Commissioners, one thing they wanted to do, there's anticipation that that tight timeframe could actually have an impact on bids, even though we know there are contractors that are looking for some work to do. In the end, I don't know that we really saw that impact in the bids, so that's probably part of that right there.
Okay. Are there any other questions of Mr. Perry?
Yeah, I do. First of all, Jones Gillum and Rens deserves some congratulations, because that's just a few short weeks...
It is.
...to turn around some extremely comprehensive bid documents, and I'm going to echo the mayor's concern. That's usually what's got me in trouble in the past, not that me, as an owner, did a bad job, and I'm not saying that you did...
I understand.
...a bad job towards the architects and engineers to make sure the specs called out, everything that we for sure wanted, because when we get into it, those are definitely the high-change orders. Because so much of it is aesthetic finishes, and weight of carpeting, and maybe the selection of the carpet manufacturer, tiles, piratings on tiles and all of that, has that really... Did Jones Gillum sort back through that and assist with that? Give me a little assurance of how we put this together in a couple short weeks' time.
Oh, one thing that I did want to just briefly just touch on what you said there, Commissioner Jennings, you're absolutely correct. They did a phenomenal job, but I also, not only did they do a great job, but the people over at Building and Development, and they all helped us pull these plans together, be sure that everything was being done. We didn't jump ahead of any other projects, but they did a great job of trying to be sure that we had everything done. The Fire Department did to make sure we had all of our sprinkler plans in place, everything taken care of. This was kind of a really group effort among other departments, trying to be sure we could get all this done in, as you say, this very short window of time.
Commissioners, Jeff Gillum, representing Jones Gillum Rens. Yes, and Norm, as you know, we spent a lot of time prior to this project, knowing that we had a tight timeframe. We called suppliers on mechanical equipment, we called suppliers on carpeting, sound materials. So we pretty much had a shopping list of everything that would be available that could be done in this tight of a timeframe. We made sure that we had multiple suppliers so that we were getting competitive bids. So we do really feel like we've tried to dot all the i's and cross the t's. We met with Marshall and his staff to approve and select colors and type of carpets, so everything's been selected. Nothing at this point is left up for chance, or, you know, there's always a chance that something could come out and say, "Well, it's discontinued." But so far, everything is documented. We've got contractors ready to order that once the contracts are approved, so that, again, we can try and meet that tight timeframe. But I want to echo what Marshall said, it's been real great working with city staff when we've been able to short-circuit some of the timeframes and get everything approved, get products ready, so that contractors know everything that's in there.
Okay. Any other questions? Any other questions of Mr. Perry?
Has the city used Chaney before, or did we check any references since we have that low of a bid?
I don't recall if we've used, if the city has used Chaney before. Yes, there were references checked, and I think Mr. Gillum could probably communicate that.
Yeah, we have worked with Chaney Construction on numerous occasions. I believe he's currently working on the K-State Student Center, so there's other projects in Salina that he is working on or has been successful on.
Thanks. Where are they from, Mr. Gillum?
Manhattan.
Manhattan. Any other questions? I didn't mean to interrupt. Commissioner Jennings? No, okay, thank you. I'll open it up at this time for public comment. And if there is none, I'll bring it back to the Commission for Action.
Mayor, I'd move that we approve the bid and contract award to Chaney Construction for Bicenter improvements for the amount, in the amount of $941,590.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to award the contract for the Bicentennial Center renovations, Phase One, project number 09-2771, Tuchini Construction, in the amount of $941,590. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Motion passes three to two with Angel and Jennings voting nay.
Mayor, if I may?
Sure.
I'd like to elaborate a little bit on that vote and kind of echo Commissioner Angel's concern. We just voted almost 40% of a $2.5 million project without any plan whatsoever for the income stream of that. And I understand a window does exist. I've seen windows before. I've never really chose out to jump out of one, that I didn't know how far I was going to fall. I think we need to get the plan for the rest of this together, because now I've heard we'd like to get it through by the end of the year. Until I get the blue sheet, I didn't understand we had a short window open. I knew that we had a project, we've been talking about for a long time, but if we've got, again, a narrow opportunity to do the rest of this, we've got to get that plan in place and we've got to cover the urgency way in advance. Thank you.
I appreciate those comments. I just encourage staff to really get a great plan together.
Item 8.4, first reading ordinance number 09-10514, amending Chapter 38, Article One of the Salina Code, adopting the 2009 standard traffic ordinance.
It looks like it's Judge Soss. It is indeed. It's not Jennifer Wyatt. I am here this afternoon on this annual visit to ask the Commission to adopt the standard traffic ordinance. It's the comprehensive code that we use in municipal court and basically reflects state statutes, and that's the reason why it's done on an annual basis. It's updated each year to reflect changes in state statutes, so that municipal ordinances are in conformity with the state statutes. We do ask that it be declared an emergency and proceed with second reading today, because the state changes went into effect July 1st. We wait for the League of Municipalities to actually publish the STO, which now they have done, so we're ready to adopt it, and we need to get it in, in place as soon as possible. The changes this year are really very minor. There's no major changes, and particularly no major changes in things that we regularly see in Salina Municipal Court, but if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer those.
My only question is, since it went into effect July 1, has it affected any of your rulings since then, because this hasn't been in place?
The, the state statute changes went into effect July 1, so the STO changes don't go into effect until you adopt them.
Okay, okay.
Okay, gotcha.
Any other questions of Judge Soss? Thank you. This time, I'll open it up for public comment. Mr. Banks, now we need three motions.
Yes, Mayor, that would be best.
Seeing that there is none, I'll bring it back to the Commission for Action.
We need three or two motions?
Three. You need a first reading, then declare an emergency.
We have, we need a, okay, we need a motion to declare an emergency?
Yes, that would be, that's what I understood you to mean, to be the second one.
Correct.
Mayor, I move that we adopt on first reading ordinance number 09-10514, amending Chapter 38, Article One of the Salina Code, adopting the 2009 standard traffic ordinance.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt the first reading of ordinance number 09-10514, adopting the 2009 standard traffic ordinance as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say nay. Motion passes five zero.
Mayor, I move that we declare an emergency exists, so that we may proceed with second reading of the same ordinance at this time.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to declare an emergence, an emergency today for a second reading. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion passes five zero.
Mayor, I move we adopt on second reading ordinance number 09-10514.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt on second reading ordinance number 09-10514 of the 2009 standard traffic ordinance. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Angel?
Aye.
Commissioner Arpkey?
Aye.
Commissioner Jennings?
Aye.
Commissioner Peck?
Aye.
Mayor Larson?
Aye. Motion passes five zero. Surely, there's no other business. If not?
Mayor, I move adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. We are adjourned as it passes five zero.